Usually get it in the middle. But, um, not yet, no. Where is he? Where is he? Damn podium.
I'd like to bring the council meeting to order. Call to order.
Yeah.
Oh, it's Ann Wester. Can everybody stand to join me in?
United States of America, and to be a public for which it stands. One nation under God, in its whole entirety does its wrong.
That's right.
Mr. Goffman.
Present.
Ms. Lynn. Mr. Cherry. Mr. Dornan. Mr. Longware. Mr. Nemitz.
Here.
Mr. Backa.
Present.
Ms. Dice.
Here.
Mr. Antonotti.
Here.
Chief Carlson.
Here.
Mr. Cranebucker.
Approval of minutes for the meeting on seven seventeen twenty-four. What are the wishes of council?
I make a motion. We have the votes presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any, any discussion or question, comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes. Here, thank you. Um, public comment, agenda items only.
Two.
So Tiffany Mosky.
The Mayor of Fire Department is asking the borough to apply on behalf of the fire department for the local share account category four facilities program for eight new radios. For the five and a half years that I've been a member, we've been applying for grants for new radios. Each year we've been turned out. So George Dunbar's office approached the fire department about this grant, knowing that we are investors in eight of new radios. Dunbar's office has also approached the borough about this grant for the past two years, and was given in response that you are not interested in the grant. This is why they approached us.
Thank you.
Um, but now that the fire department is asking to use this grant money, we're being told that the borough wants to apply for it. I talked to George Dunbar's office today, and they actually told me that if we want to apply eighteen times, we can apply eighteen times. You can both apply on behalf of the fire department, and you can apply for yourself. It doesn't mean we're going to get all that money, but you can apply. Our parts of radios are getting harder and harder to repair. Because of their age, the parts are not being made anymore. Soon they will be in total disrepair. Not only are our radios becoming hard to repair, they don't always work, which is why they need to go get repaired. Why is this a problem? Let's say I'm in a house fire, and there is a structure collapse, or somehow I get stuck inside the building. I need a good working radio to communicate where I am so the rescue team can come and get me out of the building. These radios are able to communicate not only with each other, but other firefighters on the scene and with county. We use them for communication when directing traffic, water control, whether it's, whether we need more water, or we're pumping into another truck that needs more water, or equipment that is needed, you know, hey, can someone bring me, you know, something off the truck? The list goes on and on about how crucial proper working radios are. This council has asked the fire department several times, why don't you just get a grant? So here we are, asking for your help to get this grant. We just need your name on it. The fire department is going to fill out the entire application. We're going to pay for the application fee. Nothing is required of the borough, except for the council's name to be on it, because the fire department cannot apply for this grant ourselves. This grant is for the betterment of the community. I, I believe working radios for the fire department is considered, in my opinion, betterment for the community. As I said, I did go to George Dunbar's office today and talk to his staff about this grant for better clarification, and hopefully I covered any questions you may have. Do you have any questions about this grant?
The only question I have is, how much is the fee to apply?
It's a hundred dollars.
Thank you.
In order to give them the respect for what they're asking for, just for clerical purpose, should this not have been a non-agenda item? Because we can't help them by voting on something that's not on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Where is it on the agenda?
Oh, a save grant.
Oh, 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 oh. I'm sorry. Okay, good.
And I'm sorry for speaking out of turn.
That's all right. That leaves my second question, which I didn't have, thought I may have away. When is the time limit to get this grant in?
We have to have it in by the end of September. So that's why I come to you this month. We want to get it in way before the due date.
Okay, and the borough's obligation, do you pay that first one hundred dollars?
We pay the hundred dollar fee, yes, sir.
Is the only obligation the borough has is having our name on the application because it's a one hundred percent grant?
Yes.
We have no liability.
You have no liability.
We're just a signature that says you're in the manner of borough.
Right, so the term she used was called transfer of ownership. So while your name is on the grant, it's coming to us, so you have nothing to do with the radios, you are not responsible for repairs, you're not responsible for extra batteries. That's all on the fire department. So I just want to let council know, when I looked into this, though, to be eligible, you must, the project must be owned and maintained by the applicant, which would be manor or a nonprofit organization, and they're not nonprofit, that's the problem.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are. If you are, then, then it's fine. We're a, we're a nonprofit. Okay, well, then that's, yeah, so it's either.
Can we clear that up, then? Then if.
I thought you guys weren't.
Dunbar's office is saying manor borough's name must appear as an applicant? Are we, can we be the co-applicant?
No, no.
It has to be only manor.
Correct, only manor.
Just for clarification, the borough would have to do all the paperwork for the grant. You can't do the paperwork because you don't have a login for the state for the grant. So the borough would have.
So you're refusing to give us a grant because?
No, I'm just telling you the process before you get all of that. The borough, I'm just explaining to Chuck, whatever you do is fine.
So you're.
The borough, the borough has to go in, create a single stream application to apply for the grant.
Do you have, if you get printed that application, will you fill it up?
You can't.
Well, our grant writers.
No, I mean, I mean, give us.
You can't, Chuck.
The information of what you need, and then we write it here.
You can't, it's an online, it has to be done all online.
I understand that.
So our grant writers.
You give the information together, you bring it here, we go online and do it, and then manor borough.
You do grant.
Nobody said it all.
No, no, that's, that's why I'm asking for clarification. I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, I'm asking for clarification.
With the borough being the applicant.
I'm sorry, Chuck.
No, that's okay.
With the borough being the applicant, the borough has to go in to the portal, log in under the borough's login, and submit the application. It's all done electronic.
I get that, and now I see that, here's, here's what I'm saying, it's not a problem. If the borough has no liability to this, and this is no repayment, and they're paying all the fees, here's what I see, so tell me if I'm wrong. I see the fire department providing us with all the information needed to go in that portal and put this on, and then when the, if we get the grant, when it gets here, we buy radios and donate them to the fire department, and the grant is done, it's spent, we send them the paperwork, so basically, we have to do, help them with paperwork.
We have all the paperwork.
To do this, and then we have to physically do it. Am I correct? Am I saying it here?
Yes, you're correct. Legally, that's what you have to do.
But I got a question. Terry, didn't you apply for something with radios for some grant before?
I applied for a grant through PM Works Office. Different grant.
Different.
Did we ever get that grant for those radios?
Yes.
It was special.
Okay.
Thank you. Bonnie Dawson.
Bonnie Dawson. I was just wondering whether some systems listed as new business tonight on the agenda, when the problem of people not being able to hear during the meeting has been brought up since December of 2021. It has been discussed and or mentioned approximately nine times during meetings since that, and has been on the agenda twice. Once is new, once is old, so why is it new tonight? And then wondering about the ARPA funds, since Joe mentioned last month that it was already designated, just wondering how that was designated, when? Because that's been at all meetings, and there was no decision or discussion.
Both of those are on the agenda, and they, and that we discuss.
Right, so this is the time where I'm allowed to talk about it, not knowing anything about what's coming up during the meeting? So this is just a great example of you not being able to talk about it, because I don't know what you are going to talk about. So maybe, you know, think outside the box a little bit, maybe have like a little question and answer before you guys vote on stuff?
I have no problem with that.
Just a, just a thought. Thank you.
No, I mean, now, before you go away. I have no, no problem answering your question.
Excuse me, Mr. Cherry, we can't do that. It's out of what we have.
Yeah, that's what she's asking. I understand what you're saying, and that's what she's asking about, is that we're stuck, she's stuck in a box. She makes comments, but she can't get any answers before she sits down and comes back later in the agenda, where she can't talk.
Unfortunately, that is.
It's not that unfortunate, like, I know.
No, no.
Hold up, hold up. I know, but like, the greatest words, or the words that have like the greatest disservice is, that's the way it's always been done.
Yeah.
It is 2024. Let us move to the future where we actually can get citizens involved in what's going on. Like, a lot of the frustration is because people don't think that they're heard, or when a council person wants to talk about it, it's outside in the parking lot, or it's a phone call Sunday night at eight, and then it's like, I don't know. My thing, transparency, 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 and actually getting stuff done. So. Anything else?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Don't, I love it. Yes. Chill out. I'm trying to. Can't handle that, but.
Mayor is reporting.
Um, today's kind of like my first day as mayor, so I'm going to kind of toss the report over to Chief.
He's president.
I'm sorry.
He's mayor.
Yes. The police agency handled a hundred and one calls for service for the month of July. There was two criminal cases that were filed in the magistrate court. One non-traumatic citation was issued, one traffic citation was issued, and six warnings were issued. Code enforcement is follows, there was ten code enforcement complaints, and I did four follow-ups myself. And I would just want to note by the board that the community day stats, we had three minor incidents, only one police incident, and two minor injury incidents that were handled by medical personnel.
Oh, that's pretty good.
I believe that's all, and I'm presenting.
Mr. Report. I'm on your list, Congress. Engineers report.
I received correspondence, closeout documentation for the 2024 street reconstruction project, 2024 camera drive storm sewer project, change orders, signed change orders, typical substantial completion, signed out of the day with a hangman, partial waiver of lien, final waiver of lien, maintenance project included, all other items appear to be under old business and new business.
Thank you. Is there any others that you're recording?
I'm not aware, I forgot about.
Borough managers reporting.
Yes. As far as the park grant is concerned, all the construction is completed, the lighting, the lights were completed last week in the pavilion. I have a closeout meeting scheduled for September thirteenth with the local DCNR representative, which has to occur, and then we'll put in for our reactive documents that we have to do in our final payment, please, or I'll get the final payment until we're ready, till he comes out and walks the project, so. We have, so that meeting's on the thirteenth. Any committee chairs or boards of commissions, we're going to start working on the budget here, so after Labor Day, with the finance committee, so if you have any requests, could you please get them, email them to myself or Mr. Backa? And then just to let you know, we have a problem with a storm sore on Bradyline Drive between that one and the Quillin, small sinkhole developed by the catch basin, and on the camera, if we discovered it, it was corded metal pipe, and the pipe's pretty much completely gone. So we're going to look at, it's about two hundred and fifty feet of storm sore we're probably going to have to replace, so I'll get with that, and we'll come up with, whether you can do that in-house, or it's fifteen inch storm sore pipe, so, and that's all I have for right now.
I have a question for Mr. O'Beatt. The deadlines for the budget, I had notes here, that it was set September fifteenth, is that true?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, that's pretty good. We try to, we try to in September work on the draft budget, so we can have a team for...
Well, he's looking at the calendar. You guys have workshop meetings, October fourth? And I'm just saying to the community, you might want to raise those issues about the budget, too, to bring it to council at that workshop meeting.
The October meeting would be the sixteenth, so typically, we'll, I'll meet with the finance committee before then, we'll do a rough draft, a draft budget.
In October.
To give out for October for everybody to look at and see what they need, and then November is the preliminary budget that you have to vote on, or that we can adopt the budget in December.
Then, when are we going to see the preliminary?
The preliminary budget, you won't see till sometime after the October meeting. Once everybody has the draft budget, then if you have any comments or like suggestions or.
If we look at this in September, and do it, be discussing on both meeting dates if necessary, then the October meeting, we're going to see the draft, or not until November?
No, you write out the draft budget before the October meeting, but it'll, you know.
Yeah, that's my point.
It'll be on that.
My point is that we should have another council meeting between the draft and the vote.
Well, you do, you have to.
You don't vote until December.
No, you vote in November, preliminary.
November, preliminary.
So you have to. On the preliminary budget for November, and then the final budget in December, so usually, if we get the draft out, latest by the October meeting, so you have time to look at it, comment, changes, whatever, before you have to vote on the preliminary budget in November.
Yeah, that, that, I guess that's my point, is for the preliminary budget, to vote on it, we should have a meeting before that to discuss it, and if we're going to do it in September? So that's right. So it'll be on in September again? We usually discuss it if we have issues at that point.
There's usually, there's usually nothing on about the budget in September, because we haven't even formulated the draft budget at the September meeting.
Yeah, but that's, isn't that when you should be getting your wish list? As Chelsea just said, if the, if the record, if the record gets money.
We ask the boards, commissions, other entities that are, you know, have, that's budgeted for, to give us something in September. So when I sit down in September, mid, late September, we try to wait until right after the third, third quarters over September, so we kind of have a better idea of what utility expenses were for the year, and some other expenses were for the year, so we can gauge where we think we might be at for next year, and then we'll, right after that, we'll get the draft budget out. But it's helpful, it's helpful.
I don't have a problem with them. The only thing I was concerned about was, I'm not sure that last year we had what we're talking about now, that month. So if things in September were discussing this.
We did, but.
In October, you're free to get drawn for us, we get it in our emails, we get the opportunity, we have to, do we advertise that draft?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we have to advertise that draft?
No, it's just a draft. You, if, if everybody gets everything in, Bailey, myself, or Mr. Backa, in September, what they're thinking, you're looking for in your budgets, whether planning, zoning, police, whatever, you'll have that draft budget, should have it, first, first week of October, if you ever take before the meeting. First ten days of October, so you'll have enough time to look at it, but when you don't get us the stuff, and then we put the draft out, and then you wait till the end of October, like, sometimes happened like last year, and then it's the last minute, we're trying to adjust the budget based on what people think they want.
Exactly. Last meeting of September. Thank you.
Everyone received the treasurer's report ahead. What are the wishes of the council?
I make a motion, we approve this presentation.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on the motion?
I can't hear you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hi, Mr. Cherry, thank you. Tax collectors report. Everyone should have received it prior to the meeting. What are the wishes of council?
Make a motion, we accept the taxpayers' report.
I'll second it.
Is that Dave?
That is Dave. Any questions or comments on the, the tax collectors' report? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Committee of the courts, building and properties.
Nothing.
Nothing? At this time?
We do, we'll come up later in the agenda, in the other sense.
Community betterment, parks and recreation.
I need to set up a meeting with the newest members, you know, and if you'll get to me before we leave, like a date, that's all right.
The newest members of the board?
Record.
Okay. Okay. Personal inquiries.
Just that we finalize the, well, it's on the agenda, but the team serves the contract.
Okay. Community outreach and communication. And I have nothing at this time.
No, you never do.
Planning and zoning.
I'm going to start with zoning hearing. Here's a question I have. I didn't make the last meeting, but PT Commercial came in about their approval of their storage facilities, and it was determined that they had to go back to, they had to go to for the first time, the zoning hearing board, and I noted from minutes and the newspaper that that zoning hearing date has already been assigned. And since it was done at the last meeting, then the reality was, we already had a zoning hearing date set up before the applicant would have applied to be approved here at this form. The planning commission did not request formally in their approval to go to the zoning hearing board. And since this meeting, this council meeting last month, the zoning hearing board date had been already picked?
I believe so, Chuck. I think it was after.
Was it picked after the meeting?
After. Jason, is Mr. Cranebucker zoning officer?
Was he here?
No, he got ahold of everybody after, after the fact.
And how did it make it into the newspaper? Let me go, let me, let me go back another step. Let me go back another step. You know how I am about, in any organization, the hands of the organization are supposed to handle all the things and get them back to a collection area, which is where we're here. We have a zoning hearing meeting.
I believe they said for an advert, said advertise the meeting in the newspaper.
You're missing my point. She just called out that this committee is planning and zoning. I got to get the information about it from the newspaper. Why is that?
That's a discussion you'd have to have with Mr. Cranebucker.
Did Mr. Cranebucker pick that before the meeting? At the meeting?
I don't believe so.
Chuck, I know that the applicant, I indicated to the applicant that he would have to go forward with his zoning application, and he knew that before council was even approving or accepting or not because of the zoning ordinance requirement, but I don't know when he, he applied for it, but I don't know when.
Wasn't he even here?
He did come here, yeah.
Did he present it to council?
No, he came afterwards, and I, he introduced himself to me.
I know that this time, and many other times, I've sat in these meetings out there, and when applicant does not appear to present their plan, they write him off as absent, and they're kicked to the next month if they're not there to present, because who on this, at this table, has the rights or responsibility to present somebody else's plan? So my point is, we're missing so many things to come back to one date by, since he asked. We got, listen, in essence, we approved the plan next, last month. The applicant wasn't even here, you couldn't even question them to say, I have a question about this. If you took a hundred percent the word of the planning commission and our respectful solicitor to approve it, I think we're missing an important step in coming to you.
They were here, but I don't believe that he, I don't know whether he got here when we approved it, or if it was after the fact, I saw him after the meeting.
Yeah, exactly, but he did not stand at that podium.
No, he didn't.
And answer questions to anyone of council. He got approval, and my committee, I don't even know about a date that, that should be set up for the zoning hearing board. If the zoning officer is setting it up, don't you think I should be involved in that?
Well, I know, I know there was, uh, I know he was back and forth with Mr. Mel Falto, who's the ZHB solicitor.
Yep.
About setting it up.
Well, you know, once again, legally, the approval, I mean, the, the approval by council contingent upon going to the zoning hearing board was not until you voted a recommendation of any kind. You should not have even been involved with anything going to the zoning hearing board until it was recommended by this council to go there, to set this up in, like, in front before that appro, that vote took place and a date already set in place and no applicant standing at that podium to tell you about his plan. Because there, let me say this. The planning commission sent you a very well thought out plan for their approval with the solicitor and engineer at that meeting. So they did a great job. There were some things I personally disagreed with, little things I'm concerned about. I would love to have you heard that too. Unfortunately, I wasn't here. But the applicant also was supposed to submit doc, additional documents to you before that. That was in a contingency from the planning commission. So when I tie that into this, the zoning hearing board runs right past me.
So, Chuck.
So how am I supposed to come in front of council and tell you about my committee when I've got at least one or two players on that board going around me? How am I supposed to do that? And I'm not here to make it difficult, don't get me wrong. I don't vote on the zoning hearing board. I don't do any of those things. They organize, they move it forward, that's not a big deal. But do you ever see anybody but me from the zoning, from zoning at your meetings? How are you ever gonna know what you're doing? So that's my point. So for me, that's a problem. That's a disorganization problem that we got to fix and I'm looking for your supports of that because that's exactly what's gonna happen to the zoning hearing board.
So Chuck, I'm just looking through some emails. It looks like I got an application dropped off the office for the ZHB hearing on July 30th and I forwarded to Mr. Faltovic and Mr. Cranebacher.
And on your end, that was the end of it?
Yep.
That's perfect.
Other than I had an email from Mr. Didio and I just asked him to direct up questions to Mr. Cranebacher.
Then my issue sits then with Mr. Cranebacher and maybe Mr. Faltovic. But I want you to be fully aware of it. You know, I maybe thought of as a bad guy at some point down the line and this, it's a fan, but I don't care. If we're not doing it in this time, but it is exactly right, just to keep us out of trouble, then why are we doing it? Okay. My next question is for Joe. On this monthly report to the planning commission on profit and loss, uh, it's the same one we started out with, the beginning, uh, what we need is simple. This one is dated January through December of 2024, it was at our last meeting, and the problem with it is simple. All it does is reduce in a column dated January through December, not January through August.
The date on the top is the year-to-date numbers.
No, it's January through December 2024.
Right, because that's the budgeted year, January to December.
It is, but how do we? This is, I had this question this, this before. How does the planning commission stay on budget, make sure we can pay a solicitor and engineer, when we don't know what the fees are for? All it gets done is the line items are reduced by an amount of money. So if, beginning of last month, before this came out, let's say that legal fees had, in its budget, still had $6,000 left. If the next month, what we get is a balance of $4,800, we need to know where that went.
Well, the $2,000 for the legal fees.
We need to know where that went. Do, do you think, are you saying what I should do with this, every time this comes off the email, is make sure our secretary treasurer then sits down, calculates the month before, shows what's drawn out of it? With the new balances, how close is it to budget?
Well, that, that tells you, it gives you a percentage of where you're at, what you spent year-to-date on your budget. The first column is the budgeted column and the other, next column is what was spent year-to-date.
I, I don't think you get what I'm saying at all.
Maybe, come on.
Because we're looking for a, you are running on a budget. We are looking at a monthly log. What did we spend last month on what? So for example.
So, so when I send you, for example, I didn't interrupt you, but maybe this was the wrong. At the end of August, okay, if I send you what just, what your expenses were in August, that's what you want.
Yeah. That's really what we're looking for. What did we spend the month before? Here's why, if I gave you what.
If I give you what just was spent in August, you're not gonna have a year-to-date.
Actually, with the extra columns, that computer will calculate that.
It's not set up that way.
In any standard spreadsheet.
It's not, that spreadsheet is not set up that way.
We need, you need to, you need to ask, because it is, it, it typical, uh.
It's just a memorized report and quick look, so the budgeted amount for the year and the year-to-date expense.
Well, every time you take budget money out of that budget, you put a list of who was paid to, what it was for, how much.
Correct.
Okay. That's basically what we need, that printout. Because that printout's gonna tell us, let me give you an example, let's say, well, Mr. Antonacci. Mr. Antonacci has been working on the zoning map, the zoning, which is the ordinance. He put all that together. We know that until we engage him again, we know how much budget is left. Then we can determine of what we expect to finish throughout the year. Will we have enough to engage him not to go over budget on what we anticipated for him? If we have that as month to month goes by, the chairman can very easily say, okay, this is the next things on our agenda to get done. We're gonna need the engineer, how long? He'll tell us, we see if it fits in a budget. Perfect. But if something stops by lack, then you may pay. Because we don't know when you're invoicing. We don't have any idea. We have no check and balance that says that, uh, somebody invoiced, please, I'm saying nothing wrong about anybody here, please. But we have no check and balance that basically says that money was spent on behalf of our budget and no one, our own secretary treasurer or chairman, has the ability to say, wait, wait, I'll spend that yet. That's not done. So.
Well, I mean, you know, engineers, solicitors, they fill by the, uh.
Exactly.
If you call on them, the clocks aren't ticking. If they're meeting for three or four hours, the clock is run. So, and then at the end of the month, they send me their invoice. You know, it basically breaks down what, what they did, what, you know, where they were and what they hit.
Maybe they are the bad explanation of it, but, um, ordinance amendments.
Well, that's basically all Chelsea's time on this zoning ordinance update.
But you see my point? Do you understand the simplicity we're looking for? It's just a matter of before you get rid of that page, send that page.
Wait.
The page that you, that you punch in to get these numbers.
The page I did is there actually?
Right, exactly. You log it in somewhere. Says you paid us.
Put it in quick.
Yeah, and that's all they're looking to do. That's all they wanna see.
I mean, we could, uh.
We could go over again. The code, the code enforcement report, will you start getting those again?
Uh, yes, we are gonna start, but once again, it's my first day, Chuck. I don't even have a mayor's hat yet.
There is one, some back, it has a P M on it.
Something like that. So give me a little time and I'll get things rolling.
I put it down.
Didn't mean to throw that at you, but it was on.
I got you, I got you, I was coming.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor Ed, I'm gonna slap you if I ever see you.
Let me see if this next one's there. No, the rest is on the, thank you.
Okay, public safety and how it works.
Uh, just to remind the public, as we said once before, about weather radius and code, code red for your weather warning. I put a safety tip thing back there about how you can text 911 if you can't call them, if you're in an unusual situation where you can't speak, but you can text, you can text 911. A lot of people don't know that you can text 911 for help. And the other reminder is tomorrow starts school day, so there's gonna be school buses out the bow. So everybody be cautious tomorrow morning, give yourself a couple extra minutes because they're gonna be out there screwing up traffic. So be careful, watch out for the little kids, most afternoon, late afternoon rounds. And that's all I have for right now.
Yeah, I should know, I'm working on a safe performance plan.
All business is. Discussion and for preparation and for official action on updating sewer rules and regs.
I had multiple discussions, you know, with Joe, a local contractor, his name is Chad Good, and he was bringing me up to speed with what he does. He does a thermal liner, a security place, lateral lining, it's a diversion method for rehabilitating existing pipelines. You know, he was explaining to me, you know, how the process works. Basically, you clean out the line, you televise the line, then you pull this, like felt tube, the resin on, it expands, then they pull another pipe through, liner, and they adhere. Eventually, you end up with a three mil fix line inside the pipe, gives it some structure stability. And, uh, and that might go by, three mil is about eight of an inch thick. So you have a new liner and your old pipe. He didn't say it was cheaper, he said that, uh, it's less disruption to the homeowner, that's the big advantage. You know, if the homeowner just replaced the driveway or the homeowner.
Finished with.
A basic.
Finished basement.
Finished basement, like, you know, some kind of epoxy floor and they don't want to, you know, break it up. You know, I'm a believer that you, you put new pipe in, but I understand, I know the process of fire. He says that even if there's, you know, slight misalignments, that, that it'll work. It also will work, even if there's, you know, even if there's a small belly in the pipe, he says it will be better because the flow characteristics will be better, it'll be smooth and it will enable the, you know, sewage or waste water to move through, you know, pretty easily. Now, that, that's just one method. I mean, they have other spot repair methods they can do. We talked about pipe bursting, pipe bursting here in borough before, this would be on a sc- smaller scale inside somebody's basement or yard. So putting that in the basement is what you have, pipe lining, uh, and they have this,
They're gonna what they're gonna go and clean it out first.
Well, right, yeah, you, you gotta clean it, televise, televise and clean it and then, you know, do your installation. But they do spot repairs also. If, if it's, you know, whenever Joe brings, uh, had a hot sewer project out there, just one, one place is bad, they could, they have nothing to go in and it just made a spot repair and that may be enough to, you know, satisfy the inspector that, you know, it passes the inspector. So there, there's a number of things, there's specs that I bought. Chad Good, you know, he uses this thermal liner, but this is kind of a generic thing. Like he said, clean it out, televise it, he used, uh, this lateral lining diversion method for rehabilitation. So, um, I can get this information to Chelsea, uh, you know, if he chooses to, uh, if he chooses to start making, you know, or his council helps that happen. He did say that this is pretty common, that there were one few people that have these, don't have this approved and, uh, and he said that he's been noted for a number of years. Uh, I don't know, is there any, any questions or?
Is there anyone else?
Oh, yeah, 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 there's, there's a lot. He's not, he's been going.
Yeah.
We're using, uh, when looking at all of this, are we intending to, um, amend ordinance 588, 2003 and 532, 1201?
But Chuck, I believe all we have to do is, uh, a resolution because I don't remember which ordinance, but one of those, it says that the, uh, can be amended by resolution.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to do an ordinance, do a resolution to amend our sewer lateral rules that what we're allowing.
Okay, then I think what we have to do is anytime we're amending ordinance like this, rather than just punch a hole in it and amend some section of it, we should take this short bit of time and make sure that there's any other amendments or clarifications to do in them. I think they should be looked at. So, for example.
It's just a resolution to amend the sewer, the sewer specifications.
I understand it and, and in there, if that's what we're doing, that may be a little longer than just pipe bursting, for example, or we fully clarifying in here, if you have a house in a part town with terra cotton pipe that has one section, which you do there everywhere, one section is a problem. They're making repairs and what is required to make that repair? So if they go to someone who still has, if they do terra cotton pipe, they replace a piece, they close it back in, we're done? Our ordinance won't stop that?
No, that's basically what we have, no. We're just, it would just be a resolution amending the sewer lateral specifications that say, we're giving you two additional, two additional options of replacement other than just open cut and replacing the pipe.
Yeah, I understand that. That's what the purpose of this tonight is, I get that.
Right.
I'm just saying that has this been thoroughly looked at to be current? Because these are dated back to 2012. Yeah. But see, you, you have type of.
We did, but we did update those in 2020. The lateral, uh, specification sheet, they were updated last year, 2020.
Well, when do you expect to put it back on the amendment, the sewers? To consider this, because what I'd like to do is dig a little further into these just to make sure that we just kind of didn't miss something there, because they change all the time. Ed, Gary?
I mean, with, with the, uh, you know, I'm impressed with the type of line specifications. It's like, I mean, we didn't talk about they do like a UV light ray spot repair, UV light ray burn pattern. I mean, there's a half a dozen or so variety of things they want.
Yeah.
We don't, we, we just don't want to get caught doing this now and find that in three months, somebody comes along and says UVI repairs and we don't have it, we gotta start doing this all over again. That's all. Yeah.
So would you?
We'll do it back on next month again, together.
Send a motion until, to table it until September?
Discussion, I don't think we need a motion. I mean, we're, Ed was just reporting back on it. Mark was just reporting back on what you found, you know, giving you information.
Go ahead, make your motion. Uh, I'd just like to make a motion and put it back on September, right for meetings.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Can you ask us any questions or any discussion? On those in paper, cabling, uh.
Aye.
On those opposed? Motion, please, thank you. Motion carries, thank you. Which September meeting do you want it to be?
That's to be on the business meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion and or deliberation and or official action on the inner part restroom.
I'll explain what we did.
Yes, please.
Now, we had a meeting, I have my notes here, it was August eighth, I've been over in the park. We looked at the possible location, I don't know, the last month or a month before I gave you these three options. We were looking at the option to be on the high side of the track, and, you know, we have to cross the track in three different locations. You know, we don't want to open cut through the newly installed asphalt, so. I looked at these ability, boring underneath the track. Again, you know, I contacted Chad Good, he's not like the end all be all of contractors, but he does do that kind of work. He can, he can bore underneath, you know, pit on either side of the track, put a pipe in, so that we don't have to excavate, you know, through the track. And then, we can continue, obviously, in grassy areas, continue the lateral. So, you know, I was there with the manager, and we, a few of the guys from Public Works were down there to check out the water supply and check out, you know, the manhole bit. There's a manhole bit right by the water, the bridge that comes across Brush Street. We thought that would be a good place to tie in, and you have to have a couple of bins in it. But, I mean, and the ordinance said, maybe it would just be a lateral line. Everybody, you have to have a clean one, okay, so it's not too complicated. So, we have an implant working to cap it. Jeremy Fay, he suggested running the water line up high above the track, like, run it kind of parallel above the playground. We're gonna do, I don't remember what we said, three quarter inch line, plastic roof, one inch plastic line down to this restroom. So we have the, we have the water taken care of, we have the sewage taken care of, and then the only thing, I, we could look into it, I don't know, Joe might have looked into it, was the electrical, we're gonna bring the electric, you know, there is power up on Brush Street, and there is power up through the park, so it depends on what, you know, what the power company, how they would want to service this. So, it seems like all of the ingredients, all the utilities are there that can service this pre-fat unit, if that's the way council would wanna go. It was called the Denali, I happened to be fishing with my cousins out at Twin Lake, and they have one, it's by pavilion, it's by parking area number E. I mean, it's sighted really nice, right there adjacent to the lake. So if we wanna know specifically where it is, I can give you a direction. It's on the lower lake, kind of tucked back in the corner. There's, you know, a nice handicap walkway leading to this Denali type restroom. And it was functioning, went in, checked it out, everything seemed to be going okay. I happen to know the age here, we come to that, and put a lot of these in, and he, you know, he was explaining to me, they have holding tanks there, they have sewage, so they have holding tanks, I'm hearing on that. We're fortunate, we have sewage, so we wouldn't have any holding tanks, but we were gonna ask for holding tanks on this particular unit that I live in. So, check it out for yourself, if you're ever on Twin Lakes, it's a nice looking, nice looking facility. It's all A and B, it's both the men's, it's identical to the one that Joe got a price on. So, you wanna save it, Twin Lakes, I speak up.
I missed a part of what you said, about a three quarter or one inch pipe?
One inch, one inch water line.
Water line, okay. Did you look at, what's the name of the road above the park?
Brush Street.
Brush Street.
Brush Street. Does that have sewage on the street side?
It does, but you need a grinder pump to have.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
That's why.
What are you gonna take to get all the way through the park? Putting a grinder pump outside of a bathroom, buried in the ground, shooting it up to Brush Street? I mean, you save you a ton of money.
Hey, we could look at.
Grinder pumps are pretty expensive, Chuck.
I just had one in a project about three years ago, and it was nothing compared to what it cost to move that line.
To move what?
To put a line.
Well, if we can do some of it in-house, it's just basically.
Yeah, you got the machine, you just bought the machine.
I'm just saying, we can do some of this work in-house, and obviously, it's not gonna be expensive.
It's just a grinder pump, get that main line up there on that hill, if you're closer to it, you don't go burrowing underneath asphalt, you don't have to do anything, just grinder pump it, ship it off the hill. You have electricity to the building already, and if you're talking about a one inch water line?
That certainly is a possibility, I mean, you know, whatever on the director, they're gonna look at.
Well, let me say one other thing about this then. The existing, I've done little, since the last time, trying to convert that over to, to handicap. I know it's viable, I know it works, we've discussed it enough in here, but, let me say this. I'm not gonna spend any time on it, knowing that the discussion of this new one is just gonna leave that one right where it is. Because this hundred and fifty thousand dollar Denali is not gonna leave any money left to do it. So I'm not gonna waste my time going any further with it. But what I'm gonna do different is this. Just as we have to turn it to finance for our budget, it goes to the committee. And the committee will be involved to put all that together and bring it back at a next meeting and have a recommendation. We're on properties, and the parks under that property is owned by the park. So for that reason, we'd like to treat it exactly the same way. Dave can surely be the lead between us, that anything we're looking at doing like that with that park cost, where it's coming from, what it is. And then, I need an honest, honest opinion of the long-term belief of what's gonna happen to that old building. Because as you can see, that in the park over there, after spending money to build it up, that doesn't mean I'm gonna spend all this time down there just to find out, well, we'll come to a meeting and we'll just kill changing that one over, just leave it as it is. I don't wanna waste the time on that.
Doesn't that go in with Parks and Recreation?
Parks and Recreation, I think, and I could be wrong, somebody can help with this. I think Parks and Recreation is the operation and management of that property. I think because it's owned by man or borough by deed, the actual overall falls in. I think if nothing else, probably both committees should be involved in it. Because Parks and Recreation is running operation down there, they should have a word to say whether they think the citizens will be able to use that park. So realistically, you can put both committees together.
The only problem you're gonna run into is having too many council people.
The forum.
Yeah, you'll end up forming a forum, I think, I don't.
Yeah.
So traditionally, what, if you've done other works, and it's just my ignorance because I haven't been here as long enough, other works on the park, who, what committee usually did it in the past? Addressed it, and that's who I would say would, whatever the past practice is of whoever, whether you put in a slide and parks did it, or if it's park's committee, that's who I'd recommend. I just don't know traditionally what you guys have done.
We haven't, hasn't been done to either one.
Because the committee names have changed periodically, every couple of years, but I think prior to, it was always the Parks and Rec Committee that dealt with everything in the parks.
Well, let me say it this way.
That was it.
It doesn't always be me to get people's opinion. And that anybody working on that park should share that information when it's discovered, before the meetings, with both committees. That's all. They can read it, they can send comments back to the people physically doing the work. Just keep it wide open, because that park and its restrooms have been a big subject in this town. So the more ears on it prior to a meeting, they can exchange conversations, safer we'll be. Everybody agree we can do that? Thank you.
Uh, just a question, though, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna go. I have a question.
If you're going to do that, see, just 'cause in past, things sometimes get a little weird. Who's gonna take the lead? Because you do need somebody to take the lead and get things rolling. So, I mean, I'm not asking, because obviously, I don't care who, whoever, whether I'm kinda, you know, getting a lot of councils, from councils, those are. You have two committees, so each have a committee chair, right?
Correct.
So, you're saying that information gets passed to each committee chair? That should be fine. Is that okay?
Yep.
Which is, A and T.
I got a question, Chuck. We tabled this last month, because you wanna hear, because Dave said that you had quotes.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not happy with them. Because they, for what they wanna do, they wanna turn it into a Taj Mahal. It's not what I asked you to do.
Okay, don't they all?
But you'll believe it.
So.
But we're talking about brick facade, excuse me, stone facade, and pavements with the, with the broken concrete.
Thank you. Now, I'm gonna need a motion to go out of order for executive session.
Can we finish this?
I can help with that.
Do we make a motion to do anything, or what are we doing? Should we make a motion to have them get pricing on either, on the sewer line on Brush Street or running it down? I mean, we've got a, I was gonna mention, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion to get pricing on both, on both places.
I mean, we know where they're getting water.
What's that?
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't know where you're getting water from now.
Well, we got two options, we either have to buy a new tap in MWC and come off the water line over Brush Street, or we have to come off of our existing meter pit in the park and just run a line up.
That's the one down by the old building?
It's kind of, no, that, that pit's a split, where it splits off there, the actual meter pit. Meter pit is at the base of the hill towards the end of Brush Street, straight down, kind of north.
Oh, it's over there.
Yeah, like, if you go up the walking track, and you start to go up the hill, pass like this, the ball field and all that, it's, it's right there.
So I'll make my motion to get pricing on both options for water and sewage.
Okay, I have a motion to write a second.
I'll second it.
Was that Dave?
Yeah.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now, I need to ask for a motion to be made to move the executive session up to, before new business.
I'd like to make a motion to move the executive session to now.
To now, yes. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
I didn't say anything, she did. Siri, not me.
I need a motion to bring the meeting back.
She had to bang after a long.
I said, I.
Oh, sorry, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
So, a second? Any questions or comments about the, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We, we have met for potential litigation and personnel matters. Okay. So, let's see.
Probably just lay it down.
New business and this discussion and or deliberation and or official action on approving collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local Two O Five for Public Works employees. Jim, you were right about the union.
Yeah.
Would you like to speak on the other bit, please?
All right, so we, we met with the Public Works and the Union, come to an agreement where over four years, it would be a sixteen point five percent increase. So it'd be five, five percent, five percent, three point two five, three point two five. Everything else they were asking for, we negotiated, all that stuff. So basically, they got sixteen and a half percent pay over four years, and then they would also be required to submit a bill on their health insurance, not just the explanation of that.
I make a motion to be approved.
Any clarification on those numbers?
I heard five percent the first year, five percent the second year, three and a quarter the third, and three and a quarters.
Oh, I see.
You're one five.
Yeah, I just thought one five.
So do I have a motion to?
I made that motion.
Is that a theory?
Yes. Okay, any discussion, additional discussion or questions on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Discussion and or deliberation and or official action on purchasing picnic tables and benches for me and our park. And we all should have received the drawings and submissions that we have for the, and we have the amount of submissions, the pricing for those picnic tables shown. So.
As far as the, as far as the benches are concerned, I had a conversation with Petar, friends of Petar, offshoot of Petar, if you'd call that like. They pledged up to possibly fifteen hundred dollars towards purchase of benches, that they would reimburse us for the purchase of the benches, or donate, or give towards that.
Okay, that's the only other information we have on it, right?
Other than what you have in front of you.
Right, other than we.
Should we ask questions before we get to motions and have to accept them? Today, the park has had, I believe it's four, I could be wrong with the number, the stainless steel benches that used to be down here, that are out in the ball field for Community Day.
They're wooden.
No, they're steel. They're stainless steel that were sitting around by the, the field, behind the restroom.
We're talking about the aluminum ones?
Yeah, aluminum ones, yeah.
Yeah, some of them got damaged over the years, like the ones for the basketball court and stuff. So there is one, I believe there's one left over by the sports court.
I was down there, I didn't see them all damaged up. I saw at least four that are exactly just.
They're bleachers.
Yeah, the big bleachers there.
No, I'm talking about, we're talking about benches.
Yeah, those benches that, that are, that were sitting out there, weren't they? Four aluminum benches, aluminums like this, they were down by the skate park. Now, there's the wooden ones that realistically should probably be a great bonfire one night.
They, um, I know there's, I know there's, there's one, at least one over by the bleachers.
What is along the ballpark bench that there right now?
In the outfield of the ballpark.
In the outfield.
Those are the old wooden benches that we, where it asked us to move over there. Are you talking benches or picnic table? Picnic tables.
Bents.
Bents.
I mentioned about benches.
Bents.
That P-Tark, P-Tark would donate, would donate towards those, the wooden old benches over by the playground area.
Yeah, so parents can sit one.
When you were just constructing, you're talking about, let, let me see if I can say this thing. Picnic benches are what we see here that have a table and attached sides.
There's a bench on the back table.
Yeah, and there's another, there's a price for a six-foot bench.
Is the one in front of that, right, first page down.
Yeah.
We're just talking about benches.
After the pricing, the one with an attached top and two seats, we're calling that a table, correct?
Yes, it is, picnic table.
That's what I'm referring to, did we not, like this, the one you're talking about, the bench, didn't we have one mounted in the ground before the work was done in the park?
You mean, going into the old playground?
Yeah, it was, you could come off of the walking trails and walk up to a, a bench like this.
Yeah, and we have pieces of that which was salvageable because they all cracked, the slats and boards all cracked and broken.
Okay.
I didn't think Kerry, remember, he had asked me.
My reason for asking you all this is this.
He had asked me.
How old were they? Then if they're not salvageable now, and they're built just like these.
We may be able to salvage one or two out of the pieces, but they're gonna be smaller than what's moved there.
Why just take seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars?
The motion.
For, four standard picnic benches, eight feet. Two of them for accessible, and four benches, which is, again, the picture, they see what, four side by side.
P-Tark will pay for two reverses for two of those benches.
Okay.
So if we put two over by the, by the playground, we may be able to make a third one, a, a smaller one out of the.
That takes fifteen hundred dollars off of that, that still puts us at sixteen thousand, three hundred dollars in benches. Then the next question I have about it, the way you have it in the drawing. There's four benches right there, six-foot benches. On the ends of this pavilion, there's four picnic tables and two accessibles.
Right.
And between all of that, is there any room to walk around the pavilion?
Yeah.
Where you put these here, exactly.
That's it, he was just showing those, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think the benches, Chuck, are gonna go around and submit slap.
He just showed those, just.
Okay, so those four may not go there.
No, they're gonna go, there's two of them that are gonna, which are by two of them, they're gonna go over where the playground is.
Okay.
The swings and the.
Maybe even that, uh, uh, we call it the six, the three level one. That one's still usable, isn't it? What do we call that one, bleacher?
Well, the bleachers are, we're gonna stay where they are at for the sport.
Oh, okay.
Around the walking track.
So really, is there room under this pavilion for this size of equipment? Is this the scale?
They're eight-foot picnic tables.
Aren't they the same size?
Uh, pavilion's twenty-one by two.
The receiver of the post are in here? Are these six posts accurate?
I would think so, based on, uh, from Mike Jeffrey sees where we got the pavilion from, so I would think it's accurate.
Because the, the way these are set up, you're literally gonna be out around the picnic, around the posts to get through the picnic tables. These are really, really close.
And you'll have a scale, do you? There's a scale on this.
This is, I mean, to me, I think it's an overkill. I think you, there's two people's under there.
How many?
I don't think you need, you don't, two of them aren't needed, I think you're gonna need four of them here. Two accessibles and two picnic.
That's council's decision.
And you're gonna, if you look at where, see where your posts are? If you look at this altar, look at this way. Take the center, two benches out of here, the ones against the post. Slide the handicaps on the left side of this drawing in towards the center, centered between the end post and the center post. And take the ones on the right side and move it in, and center it between the two posts that are left. Nobody will have a back to a post when you're sitting there. And you'll be able to walk around this without running into posts.
I'm pretty sure Chuck, it would, we probably should back it this way because I think the pavilion relates to manufactured, backed on the, same, accommodate forty-eight.
Yeah, and that connection, realistically, you put that many people under there and it could rain. This is how close they're gonna be to the overhead with what you have here now. You're gonna have this. So they're gonna be huddled and set on the building. Keep getting wet.
And is there room for two?
Yeah, a poster in the way for eighty-eight.
There's a couple, there's one across.
So Chuck, we can, I mean, we can do the, uh, two picnic tables and two benches, and then the two handicap accessible ones.
Do you have a question? Is that the grant money that we bought for the park? Will that pay for this?
No.
So if we take two benches down, we're down to twelve thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars because that's thirty-six hundred dollars roughly.
The pavilion's really small. You've got a lot of people that need a place to sit.
Yeah, friends of roughly fifty.
Like, it's this whole bid down to twelve, just over twelve thousand.
There's no, there's no benches for the kids' places, the parents can sit.
Jeffrey Associates, who's that? And that number do not have to bid.
It's CoStar.
Well, you know me and CoStars. I don't, I don't, I don't know them, but I don't like taking anything we spend money on and finding a vendor and going straight to them because they're CoStar. That means we just pull everybody, if we had somebody in this town that, uh, is a salesperson of this type of equipment, we just lock them down. Didn't even open the door to them.
Well, so, I'm not sure if the installation cost will change, but I think if you want two, two benches and, um, four picnic tables, it's eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. And then, you know, um.
Wait, wait, say that again?
Two benches.
Two benches.
I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, two benches and four tables. And then with fifteen hundred, or roughly from friends reimbursement, that takes, that takes it down to sixty-eight, sixty-two. Like I said, it is CoStar pricing, but that price, even at the eight-three sixty-two, that's well under the requirements to even get, uh, three quotes under, under the state being.
In that case, we have to trust that you didn't do it to Donnie's to see that these numbers are fair and correct?
I believe they are, I mean, we've, we've dealt with, Jeffries in the past, they've always been pretty, pretty good. Like I said, I just don't know, with the, if the installation number's gonna change, taking two benches off, I'm, I'm thinking it will, I just don't know how much.
I think freight will also go down a little bit.
Yeah, because there, there's concrete in.
Yeah, freight, freight will go down a little bit too. And that's why, and that's the other reason why you want to order the benches and the tables all at once to maximize your savings on freight, because it'll probably center the, along my truck.
So, do I, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we buy two eight-foot picnic tables. Two accessible, uh, handicap accessible picnic tables, and two of the six-foot benches.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those appr, uh, opposed? No? Motion carries, thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion and deliberation and/or official action on purchasing outdoor basketball systems for the inner park.
What's, what's a basketball system? That's not basketball six, I think you would say basketball pips.
We talked about this a couple months ago. I think we all agree that we need them. It's just a matter of which ones you like. And my question would be, this is Jeffrey Associates also, can we put them all together so the freight will be in your bottom?
I can ask them, I don't know if they come from the same vendor. This is Jay Pro Sports, and the benches are.
Two or when?
Uh, the benches are Play World, so no, they would be coming from two different, two different vendors.
And there's, yeah.
And I want to say this about Play World, we have that playground over there, we had an issue with one, the one tubing on the ladder cracked over the winter. And, um, called them up and, no problem, ordered us a new one, get it covered under warranty, they'll come in and replace it. At, you know, no cost for the borough, so.
Can I make a comment here about this? Because it brought my attention, basketball isn't a basketball, is it?
Yes.
I don't think it is. Because, I mean, not here, I was, I was pointing out.
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
So, I'm glad you brought that up. I had a conversation with, uh, Lynn Fire from P-Tark about pickleball, because that's a fifty-by-hundred sports court. So we theoretically could put two pickleball courts sideways, and she told me that nobody would probably use it the way it's set up because they don't want to chase the balls. If there's no fencing or nothing, then I said, just get an extra player standing behind it. I mean, we're trying to avoid fencing down there because every time it floods, it's a problem. So, um, she did, I did mention about pickleball, and she did say that, that she just, they complain if they're playing somewhere and the ball goes off, unfortunately, they're gonna go get it.
It'll go off every time, it's always the ball. You gotta, you gotta fence it. It's like these tents, it's miniature tents.
So basketball, you don't have to.
So there's this miniature tents.
As basketballs, you're gonna limit the future use of that for anything else.
Well, you can still do pickleball on it.
What you put hoops up?
You can still do pickleball.
You can paint the lines?
You can have more than one line, different sport lines painted on it, they do that all the time on multi-purpose courts.
Well, if that's big enough, that time you put two hoops in.
It's fifty-five hundred.
The hoops are gonna go on each end. The pickleball will run this way, not this way.
Yes, so they won't be running into the poles. Okay, so again, I ask.
I tell you what, sometimes it demeaning, I just wanna go.
Do I have a motion? Purchasing.
Which ones do you want? Which ones do we want?
Huh?
Well, if we do, really do pickleball, that's what.
Basketball or basketball?
If you guys would make up your mind.
I, I think we need to discuss these numbers on these options.
Yeah, that's what we're here for.
Not me, my friend was.
The optional installation is thirty-seven hundred dollars. To drill a post hole bigger, hole the correct depth, and fill it with.
Well, see, this work that they're talking about should be done at work sessions. And then you already had your discussion, and you could go to the next meeting. I do.
Once we drill that, I don't know if we have the ability to hoist that.
But we can train old dogs to trip.
Basketball post system up, keep it in place while everything sets.
Well, I tell you what, then we need the do makers guys, because I don't believe that, I believe they can, that we have the equipment. To, to, to use a, a, a cloth strap and strap that right to that bucket, and pick it up, and, and maneuver that thing in that hole. And realistically, he only has to get it up long enough and support it. You're gonna have to put two-by-fours off of ground stakes to get it level. And you gotta get that bucket out of there and let that concrete dry.
Screwing two-by-fours into a brand-new metal basketball.
No, you don't screw into the metal, you build a frame around the.
Well, yeah, we can do that.
And it, one sits here, one sits here, and you put your side posts off, clips, and dries overnight. And you gotta make this department for thirty-seven hundred dollars? I surely wouldn't pay somebody else to do that same thing. Plus, remember this, they're not gonna make that whole block bigger than the post.
I mean, I don't think they can drive, but.
And, and to deliver the cheapest one at thirty-one hundred dollars? To deliver two? I mean, realistically, you, you, that's, you know, I don't, this may sound crazy, but I, I gotta tell you, I honestly think sometimes about what we spend up here, with the people in this town spend this amount of money here on the house. And I said to them, you can have, you can have two basketballs in the backyard. One for seven thousand dollars, one for eight thousand, one for almost nine, and one for over ten. They would laugh me off the park.
Actually, they wouldn't, Chuck, because I can tell you, at least two residents in Canada that put up basketball systems for their kids, they paid quite a lot, I think thousands of dollars for one, to have it put up and installed.
Well, there's two of them.
Look, I told me.
For every two you put up, not here, it's absolutely not. They'll wait for you to put up, send it out here. I, I just think from my, my belief is.
Chelsea's.
Of course, installation, any one of these options is way over.
I must speak too, because I'm.
It's no different than we just have, uh, mulch over on the playgrounds, right? You can go to the local lawn and garden and buy mulch for X. But we have to buy engineered wood fiber that's certified for playgrounds at like five times X.
Ah, yeah. Yep.
So, what are the options?
Which one's the one?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
I like option two.
Oh, she's getting snippy.
Which one?
Billy's option two.
Second, third page.
Okay.
That's one.
Yes.
It's last pack, boy.
It's an option.
Uh, acrylic. That's number two on the front page. Well, that's installed, so we can discuss the installation.
I'm going for the uninstalled price.
Which is forty-nine thirty-three.
Okay, and that's option two, making second.
Option two.
That's your motion?
That's my motion, with Minneboro installed.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. For option two and minus the delivery, or the setup.
No, you're gonna take it off.
Yeah, I don't think so. Any qu, questions or discussions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for option two.
Did you ask for no's?
Yes.
I did. And then I, I think.
Here is. The lines, no.
Okay.
The lines, no.
Okay, so we have one, yeah.
Okay.
Next on.
I'm bringing next.
Is the discussion and your deliberation and your official action on coordinates six zero one dash two four dash zero three approving a restricted license agreement to red the fence with an even protect parcel. ID number nineteen dash oh three dash oh three dash zero dash oh nine three.
Yeah, that's the one we talked about before, that maybe we should put a fence up on the one side, a privacy fence on the one side of your yard, and there's a thing to do there. to do there.
And that's why we need to-
Similar to what we've done in this town.
I'll make a motion, we'll put it.
I'll second it.
Who is that, Dave?
Yeah.
Um, any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Discussion and/or deliberation and/or official action on awarding contract for Oak Street and McElvee Street sanitary sewer project. What are the wishes of council? What are the wishes of council?
I'll make a motion, accepted.
To pick one. Below is bitter sesame.
That's a little picket.
State that.
I'm sorry?
State who it is and what the bottom.
Sesame utility, and, you know, sesame utility.
And the price, the contract price.
Uh, contract price is four hundred and sixty, second page.
Second page.
Sorry.
Total bid amount.
Uh, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, and then for-
That was for both.
That's for both.
That's everything.
That's both the M. C. County.
Total bid amount.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
The day?
Day. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Discussion and/or deliberation and/or official action on paving a portion of the public works slash police station parking lot.
Um, so I asked for this, here, I asked for this on the agenda, um, in conjunction with the bridge project, when they're done, they're going to be paving over there, they ran some gas line through the front of the lot, um, not a hundred percent sure whether we're going to work on it now, because they still have a bunch of stuff over there, um, and this would be like for a million overlay for the remainder of the front of the lot, and hopefully along the side of the lot. I, I got rough estimates, um, looking for a motion to approve this, not to exceed, uh, a number of twenty-three-two-hundred, which would keep us under the required threshold for bidding. I got some other pricing too that's over that from a couple additional, um, contractors through Mr. Enzino's office, but if, if we can do it, it, it kind of makes sense, not while they're over there, they'll have all the equipment, they're paving anyway, um, El Grande's going to do the bulk of the paving for this, the street, and they, when they do all that cleanup and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, we can get the rest of the, hopefully, the public works building, and decide the police building, it'd be like a one and a half inch million overlay.
And this is El Grande who's doing?
El Grande's doing the main paving work for the, the road and all that, um-
He's not just, do you want to ask him to extend it into that part?
Yeah, I already talked to him, and he gave me a number, it, it won't exceed twenty-three-two-hundred, which puts us under the required threshold, like, anything over twenty-three-two is a bid, and I got two additional numbers that are higher than that, but I did get three quotes, um, for this, so if, you know, limits of work, if it works out, I'd like to do that, the approval for that number not to exceed twenty-three-two. We actually have, um-
When do they plan on paving?
Huh?
When do they plan on paving, right?
I don't know, I don't know, hopefully sometime in September, last I talked to him, he didn't have a big schedule, but, um, once we pay the retainage from street paving this year, under general street paving, we'll have twenty-one-eight-zero-three left that we could use out of that, and we can take the rest out of contracted services and public work, which would be about fifty, fifty-nine all.
Might ask him if he can do it for what we got left, the twenty-one?
I'd be him up a little bit.
I make a motion, we proceed.
I second.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Hey, Dorn.
You do.
Which one, pick one, tell me where, okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Um, next is the discussion and/or deliberation and/or official action on improving the twenty-twenty-five NMO for the pension plan.
Yeah, this is the same thing we do every year for your estimated NMO for twenty-twenty-five for both the non-uniform and uniform pension plan. Um, the other thing we'll have to do is we do every year for this number on the uniform pension plan to be accurate is, um, we'll have to pass a resolution waiving the five percent contribution rate from the employees in which sent the plan, which we do every year. We still have a surplus in that pension. So, the business, you need to approve this, we then have to approve the, I can send it in to the respective pension plan.
Make a motion to approve it?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Hey, Dorn.
You do.
Which one, pick one, tell me where, okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Um, next is the discussion and/or deliberation and/or official action on improving the twenty-twenty-five NMO for the pension plan.
Yeah, this is the same thing we do every year for your estimated NMO for twenty-twenty-five for both the non-uniform and uniform pension plan. Um, the other thing we'll have to do is we do every year for this number on the uniform pension plan to be accurate is, um, we'll have to pass a resolution waiving the five percent contribution rate from the employees in which sent the plan, which we do every year. We still have a surplus in that pension. So, the business, you need to approve this, we then have to approve the, I can send it in to the respective pension plan.
Make a motion to approve it?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, aye. All opposed? Thank you. Discussion and/or deliberation and/or official action on local share account category four facility program brief. What are the wishes of council?
I make a motion that council and the front department work together to get radios and they need.
What?
I'm not an executive officer, I don't have a-
Are you an active member?
Yes.
I make a-
I'll make a motion.
I think, I'd recommend you don't go upon this item just because you have a other interest in it, so you don't have a conflict, okay?
I'll make a motion that we-
Oh, I already did.
Yeah, I know you're already set. He's, he's walked in. So, are you second?
I'll second it.
All those in, uh, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have one question about it, I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing that I have. Um, what did she go, what did she back there? Is this it, Millennium's, uh, Millennium's, uh, Strategies Grant Opportunities, uh, is it a D, E, E?
No, it's, it's an LSA Casino Four Facilities Grant, Chuck. It's, it's from the casino money, the local county, you know.
Oh, good, then we have more money. We'll talk last thing. I have more money. Okay.
All right. Um, so I have a motion, second, any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I oppose.
Thank you.
Understand, I'm sorry. We oppose to your opposing.
Okay, next one is discussion and/or deliberation and/or official action on zoning ordinance.
Um, I'm assuming that everyone received an email with this book in?
No.
Good, yeah.
I sent out an email to council, um, yesterday with, uh, the proposal ordinance in the appendices. So you all should check your email.
It's there.
It's about a hundred and ten, uh, ten or eleven pages long. The planning commission made a recommendation.
Looks just like this. I was hoping to get your confirmation that you have it, but I saw from, I got it twice, I got it from, because of the planning commission, I got one because of council, and I, I did check the, how many cents, you did have everybody sitting here, and I-
I got it.
And if anyone didn't get it, call me, and we'll just have to-
I have two in here now. I can get you a copy of it, I do have that. Um, the, the position that's in now is that Monday night, the planning commission, uh, recommended approval of it, to bring it to you, and you know, we spoke about this, this project is now two years old. This is the same one that I started out two years ago with, uh, Gary Falcovich. He had it for a year, and for the last year now, almost to date, the planning commission has torn apart everything that he wrote with our solicitor, Chelsea. Uh, painstakingly, meeting after meeting after meeting, everybody went home after every meeting, went, went home. And, so this thing has been mannerized. It isn't something that's customary in all, in all other municipalities, it's been changed to get it to fit in its town without making it more restrictive, but it works a lot closer with property owners in town. You'll see in areas from residential to commercial, you'll find use tables that tell you everything about what can be used, what it means, definitions, it's complete. Uh, at this point, you have it, and, uh, Chelsea's sending it per sender.
It was already sent, Joe actually sent it on to Westmoreland County.
Yeah, Westmoreland County.
Yesterday, correct, Joe?
They have forty-five days to review, so our timing of getting it to you now is this. Forty-five days, if we're lucky, it's thirty days, we could put it on next month's meeting, regular general meeting, for the purpose, if the county got back and all that is done while we're ahead of schedule. If it hasn't gotten back, then it will be October. But regardless, you have at least thirty days from now to read, digest it, you've got eighty questions whatsoever, you can call anybody from the planning commission, you can call Chelsea, myself, A, you know what I mean, wherever it might lie, but realistically, um, I think our solicitor and everybody on the planning commission agrees this thing's done.
So, just for, um, council state, what we would ultimately need, and again, we don't know what the county comments are yet, but I anticipate that we probably, we would have to have a public hearing before we adopt this ordinance for, um, the public to come in and make their comment and everything else. Um, because of the review period, we may have to wait, I, I think October is the appropriate time to actually have the public hearing. Council needs to decide whether they want to have it, and you can decide at your next meeting, when we're going to advertise to have it, just think about it, we could do it, we could talk about it on September fourth, and then on the eighteenth, and we do need, I will need a motion at that point on the agenda to advertise to then have, for the public hearing, okay?
Well, I would like to, you do like this, would have it before the regular meeting, same night, now, though. But I think eight, I don't know, I don't trust it, no.
I believe we can talk about, um, the eighteenth, I think is the third Wednesday in October, but I'm not-
I mean, you want to have a public hearing before the council, are you sure that's enough time?
Well, that's a, so because it's a comprehensive zoning ordinance, you might want to do it a different night, it just depends on what you think the public should have.
Well, I think that, just as you have it early, uh, there should be copies of the draft here. If anyone wants to come in and read it, look it over, know it's a draft, any thoughts we might be able to minimize it, but this is just in support of the zoning map from some months ago.
Yeah, so the, the ordinance is not changing the map, what they are changing though, there's a whole bunch of changes with additional uses and things like that. But the map creates the same. Yeah, I recommend that we table it at least for the workshop for September fourth, and then you guys can talk about it on September fourth, figure out when you want to advertise and when you want to have your actual public hearing.
What do you mean? Sort of, sort of, because the reason for getting it to you a month early to save time to digest it, we can't, you know, the date after the county has approved it, and if they go forty-five days, and it's already been sent, they will use the date, uh, on the transmittal, so if that was sent out yesterday, forty-five days-
They know, we know it's today that they received it, in my-
Right, that's going to date on that, they'll date it right there, it's, uh-
The twentieth.
Yep, and they will, in forty-five days regardless, so-
Your early, early offset around November fifth or something.
So, the sixteenth is the third Wednesday, and council just needs to decide, if you guys think that because it's a comprehensive zoning change, you might have more people from the public here, it might be longer than our last public hearing that we had just for the central business district, so we might want to have it on another night, that's, I would just do it then before the sixteenth, and then on the sixteenth, if I show our council, they could adopt it at that regular meeting, but we can talk about that September fourth.
Yeah, but when you make that point, because that forty-five days for the county will be complete anyway.
Correct.
And forty-five days-
Too late to call, it repeats itself.
Thirty days for that, you just don't work today, so forty-five days just to get that cushion, we change that date.
Right, so I think September fourth, we can have a better discussion about when you want to hold it. That's when you should put it on the, the workshop and, uh-
And, that's September fourth.
Correct.
And you can still, you have to have thirty days, which means as soon as they give us October.
Yeah, it's thirty days.
Still get us the October, that's it.
Correct.
I need to work. It's like, I make a motion, and then we, uh-
Cause I know the song is trying.
September fourth, or-
They come through here.
Yeah, but what are you hearing, speaking?
It's dragging for some reason. There's a drag on it.
Joe, Joe, Chair, he's still on.
It couldn't have been, I don't use three minutes.
That's your name? Ted, Ted, Ted Norman, second, Mr. Taylor, September four.
We just want it on the workshop to talk about when, and then they'll put it, you'll put it on the eighth, yes, but I want you guys to talk about it.
I don't want to talk about it, no.
Okay, okay.
So, any questions? Or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, discussion and/or deliberation-
Little one that's chugging.
-or official action on community room sound system. What are the wishes of council? One of the wishes counts up.
Okay, here's what you got. The sound system, of course, has been a problem here for some time, and I think we have come to the point to solve it. Here, what is it? We have to set up this room to work for the public to hear in an ADA complaint speaker system. So I've done some homework, and I found the system that gives us eight tabletop microphones that can sit spread across the table. It gives us tables, extension cables to reach the distance, USB packs, splitter cables, cases, a twenty-person assistive listening, listening system with neck loop, and earpieces, uh, loops for the ear. Power supplies, batteries, RCA cables, Dolph Voice sets, completely portable JBL PA system. So in a nutshell, what that mainly means is this system, which is a system that can sit anywhere inside a cabinet back there, anytime this room is used. It has transmitter, picks up everything directly from the microphones, transmits them into these little discs. Can be placed over the ear, or a cable goes around the neck, it's right here, ADA acceptable. There's twenty of those. There is speakers, I'll get there. And now, microphones, has a control panel, has a chairman's microphone in case you have to mute. Everybody individually can mute. And like I said, they sit in between other person. If we need two, this is needed, any time if we felt there's need more.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, the chairperson can use the microphones?
You can, but you, the whole system.
The whole system, not.
If some additional conversation might be going on, sensitive, you can reach out and mute everybody. And then get control again, and then that'll all be ours. It has this one, but this piece I think I'm going to take out of this. This piece is a micro, a large microphone system that is designed to have two microphones. Their thought was for podium, but in this other system, it includes one. So we already have one, so I might take this six hundred dollars out of it. And the speaker system is too large. Uh, you'll probably know some of these better than I do. They're portable systems, pair of eight-inch speakers powered by eight-channel mixer with Bluetooth. System pipes, portable, loudspeaker quality, three hundred amps, the whole bit. So this system really is plug and play. But.
Needs our need.
It does. It meets everything ADA. I took this portion of this, and I gave a copy to Jerry Lewis. Asked her to read it over and give me an opinion. She likes it as well. So that, this should solve two-thirds of our issue. The other one is forwarding this information to other interested parties of ADA. Make sure they also put their stamp of approval on it. And then realistically, we can order this, it'll come in boxes, and it gets plugged and played, and we're done.
Not much.
Right? There you go, you're going to like that. In order for this thing to work properly.
It's like waiting for Christmas.
I'm back to this. Oh yeah. Dead bow on there. This is what I had said to you in a previous meeting. Unless somebody's dying to pass them around. I met with the gentleman across the street. The cabinets.
Dawn, Dan.
There he is. I met with him because this system is best be more permanent. Cause you're going to have to drill holes, you're going to, or you're going to have wires hanging. I met with him and discussed exactly what you're sitting at now. Instead of square sides like this, angled sides. It sits six chairs across the top, four down this side, four down that side, and include that. So they all be the same. You can move it where you need to, back here, you can raise it up a little if you need. But that system right there was. And the third piece of this problem is this door right here. I noticed tonight, Dawn again happened to completely stop and wait for a train to leave to continue. Not only could they not hear her, Chelsea couldn't hear, and she's sitting next door. Right? So this door, original specs had outside of it, which was removed from the plan.
Emergency removal.
In the process, it's just a box.
Emergency door.
With a lean roof on it, another handicap accessible door down here. So that all the noise of the train will bounce off of that insulated wall and not off of this door. It'll reduce this sound by seventy to eighty percent.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, won't go that far. Vibration comes through. So, all that, to give you an idea, let me recap that. Table, wall and door, speaker system with microphones, earpieces, podium, everything. We originally expected to spend on the su- sound system alone, the comments remain here at the council table of thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. This complete thing should be approximately twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars. Yeah.
Requires a bid, formal bid.
A lot of my deal except for the.
Uh, that'd be.
That's three pieces.
That'll be under the solicitor, it's one project.
Three pieces, I'm buying that.
I knew it.
You can't, you can't break up that project into pieces.
We're not, yeah, but what are, what are we bringing in? The only thing we're doing is building a cabinet with a guy across the street. We're buying from a company, a nine, a, a seventy-six hundred dollar system, the sound system. We're buying it, it's coming here, we have no contractor doing anything. So that's seventy-six hundred, eighty-nine hundred on the table, this and podium. And then I wrote ten thousand dollars in here with the maintenance department's help of putting it together.
You mean of doing that? So I think what you, the way, you know, if you keep that separate, you're under the bid thresholds. You have to keep it under twenty-three thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That's your goal, if you do not want to.
Well, this number of ten thousand is my estimate of what, for the, I'll tell you why, it's very high. We need a handicap accessible sized door out here. So that it can work off any hardware you get in there, you know, to put the button. And then it's just walls and a roof, a sliding roof, it's on the back, it's not being expensive. And realistically, the maintenance department can probably put that together in no time. The question is, because it's on a commercial building, how far do we have to go to put a need to on the back of our building with Allen?
Gary, talk to Jason Love, not looking at car and social, it's a commercial building.
So I think what we should do is really look into that ten thousand.
It's a freeze.
The estimate that you created for that portion, if we can get it below the twenty-three-two.
Well, let me say this, we don't even have to put that in here. This is the long-term solution for the most immediate problem, which is the sound system.
Right.
And if we look at just the sound system, we're doing a table and a sound system.
You still need two additional quotes then.
We could go out and get two additional quotes.
Or telephone quotes that were.
Yeah.
I can do that.
So that way, we could do it that way, and then you keep that separate, and then later down the line, if you think that that's still causing sound issues, then you do it in a change to your building envelope.
Exactly. Cause realistically, that's, I mean, the original design, this is the two things that came off, or the three things was the roof.
There comes.
This is pitch roof.
Keep just.
The front had, uh, of each door, this had a bridge, a block in there, so you stand in there during, and this was on there. And those were taken off to put the equipment in these lots, is what they did, and put the live.
So council really likes the idea of whether it's a permanent desk type thing, and what you've described of the sound system. We can go out and try to get two more.
Let me, I got a question.
Go ahead.
This table comes in, you and I talked about this, it comes in three pieces, it's on wheels, right?
No, it's not on wheels unless we expect him to put them on wheels. Cause you really don't have to, what's in here? And it's permanent, you just set it right on the floor, you're done.
What about the microphones and stuff?
They're all, we already, we needed one wire chase.
No, I'm saying, are they going to be permanent, attached to this thing?
You should have small hole drilled for the cable to come from up.
But is the microphones, if you permanently put this in the room, are the microphones going to be permanently affixed to the tabletops?
No, just the hole where the cable goes through the box. So each, because they're direct wired, the cable, which is going to sit on here, I need to send this down here for you guys to start seeing this.
Why don't we look at the immediate need issue?
Then this is the immediate need, the sound system.
Yeah.
Okay?
Why don't we just look at it?
Well, that was thirty-five thousand dollars on the whole. This is a whole lot less.
So Dave, because.
Because if we do, if we're going to take those and strap wires and take them under these tables and take them down after every meeting and take it apart. Where are.
Chuck, why do we need a new podium?
If he just, he threw in his part of this.
Four hundred dollars.
The solicitor was trying to.
Four hundred dollars, but it, that monster compared to what he'll put in here.
He built that, he, he built that.
He knows. But it'd be much smaller, and it will be able to sit over there.
So Dave, because it's.
Over here.
Dave.
Cause I have a microphone on, we won't have. I can't see half the people over there.
The desk and all the sound system equipment is greater than ten thousand dollars. We have to get three, you have to do three, two other bids, or two other worries. So for, for the procurement act to satisfy the legal obligation, so we couldn't do it tonight anyway. The only way you can do it tonight is only voting on a desk, or only voting on sound system equipment, they're both under ten thousand dollars individually. But because this is combined, and I, I'm not going to legally say you buy a desk for no reason other than for a sound system. It's all included that you'd have to go get two more telephone quotes.
I know, I mean, until the, getting a final motion on this next month is not the big issue.
Right.
It is, it's been long enough, it has.
Right, I, I totally agree, I just. Legally, I don't know what we have to do.
I mean, my opinion, I like this, I told you this a couple months ago. My opinion, I think this desk should be in three separate pieces on those. Cause at the end of the day, this is a community room for the community to run out, and it would be easy to push it out of the way, rather than have it right here.
Well, let me say this. If you figure that if you took these two wings and moved them slightly up, that's corner slightly out of the bed. And it was sitting here permanently, that's a dance floor, it's already taken off so many feet. But let me tell you what it will do, unquestionably. When Bobby's birthday party needs a place to have it, and Bobby sits right here in the middle of that, and gets to talk to the people to candy his birthday. When Suzie and Tommy get married, and the best man sits right there and has a microphone to talk to everybody. You're going to get a lot more people paying us back what it's going to cost us to do.
What about when Charlie running around damaging?
Getting it all everywhere in place.
That's what you take deposits for.
What's that?
That's what you take deposits for.
Or we just put it on wheels.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know if you, if you took those two tables and bolted them together and put it on wheels.
Do they have to be moved in together? I don't mean.
That's a wing.
You just push them up against each other. You have some of the wheels.
Every time you move it, you know, you're, you're going to have an issue with the, the microphones.
You're going to start disconnecting.
You're going to have to disconnect microphones.
Well, if the microphones sit up there, and then you run wire from there into the table.
No, no, no. There will be, at every, between every other person is a microphone.
Right, I get it.
Each one of those, the wires will go down underneath the cap, on the cabinet, it will go all the way down to a central system. The central system is where they're all plugged in, and it has this remote piece. The suit shoots out to the earpieces, and all that's behind the cabinet. When you go to start taking this thing apart, you're going to be unplugging microphone wires to get them apart. So I mean, if you want to do that, but I got to tell you, we could go through all of that now and guarantee you that if the first three times that table was taken apart and moved, nobody will take it apart again.
I'm just saying my opinion.
I appreciate it, and I understand what you're saying, I just think we're only picking up like six, eight feet at the end of a wall. Because that's a lot of dance room out there.
Fire department, you guys used to be in here, if you ever come back in here, what do you think?
Well, that's going to be a big problem to set up tables for the fish fry. If you've ever been to one of our fish fries, we pack the tables in here.
Yeah.
So you just took out how many tables by that you have to have this permanent structure.
Yeah, but you know, I understand that, I get that, I really do. But I'm a numbers guy that assesses every avenue of something. For example, what will, will the fire department lose something in revenue because they will have literally three less tables in here? Or four tables, whatever it might be? Or will this room get rented out a lot more for more than just four walls and a tile floor? I mean, we have to look at that reality, there's people that will rent this because we have our own parking lot, we got one big room, a men's room, a ladies' room, it's clean, and it's not a place for the, the party to sit.
And kitchen.
Yeah, kitchen, all of that, so I mean, the reality is, what the money this borrow is back off this room compared to how much the fire department might lose on a one, you know, at a, at a period of time. I don't know, I don't see the, I don't.
But like Jim said, what happens when Charlie comes running up and.
I use that because of check.
And, and, and breaks something, you know? So now you're losing more money because you have to now get it.
Well, let me say this, we gotta, we gotta get out of the nineteen forties when folding chairs were, and, and no microphones is what was normal in small towns. We gotta get out of that, we gotta deal with ADA today, we have all these other regulations out there, we've got to get ourselves out of this.
I agree, but we just need.
But, but you want something, but we should, we just.
But you need to see completely other people that are.
Tonight about helping the fire department, then it's time for you to also help the bar.
But I'm not saying, I'm not saying for the fire department. I'm saying, any party you hold, you got kids running around.
What's going to happen, I mean.
You know?
But if it's right here.
And then are you under liability because they got her on your hook? So Chuck, what I would ask from you, um, because we do have litigation pending with ADA. Can I get a copy of the sound system information? I just need that, so I want to send it to our expert, make sure it satisfies the ADA. So I can check on that before this.
ADA stamp.
Are there one, one about it?
There's one, there's one. There's a right down at each piece. There's a right down at each piece in there.
Do you have copies for yourself? Okay.
Well, you just got more ADA litigation.
Anyone?
Yippee skippy.
Okay, maybe I can pop that over. Chuck, you said about a way that the ADA people can listen to it. Are these headphones, can you go over that again, because I wasn't really sure what you had?
It's a disc. That has a earpiece, you can stick it on like the old earpiece on your cell phone before we have Bluetooth.
Okay.
Hang it over your ear, where it has a cable, a chain. And you put it on your neck, you need to hear.
Chuck, what about people with a hearing aid?
That's, that is, that's all by ADA for hearing aids.
I'm not talking about hanging on there, I'm talking about wearing it.
Yeah, if they wear it, they need to.
Is it compatible that we have with ears from the?
Yep, that's the one they put on their ear.
Like this, I was missing you too.
If somebody wears a hearing, like, like my father's all right here, they're Bluetooth compatible. So when his phone rings, he taps a hearing aid, and the speaker comes through his hearing. So if somebody's here at a meeting and they have a hearing aid, it's Bluetooth compatible. When somebody speaks into the microphone, they can only hear that through Bluetooth on their, in their hearing.
Good question, I don't know.
I know that's one of the, I know that's one of the things that they mounted for us by a task.
Use that tone of voice, everyone, and everyone can hear you.
They did say that.
That's what's needed.
Hang it over a hearing aid, so I don't know if that's, I understand what you're saying.
If you're hanging it over a hearing aid, they have a hearing aid in their ear, they're not going to be able to put that thing in their ear to be able to hear.
Joe, this is saying, and I'm just reading it from the, the information Chuck gave me, the audio is sent wirelessly, wirelessly straight up to their ears, avoiding the degrading effects.
It's sent wirelessly on their, the license.
Correct, so they would have to put it next to their hearing aid, they'd have a hearing aid in, and they would put like a little.
Uh-uh, you're wrong.
I'm just reading what this, here.
He, he's talking about if we have speakers and you're transmitting out and speaking a lot enough, people with hearing aids can adjust their own hearing aids to hear without having to use a sys, a system device. But if, if they don't, if they have older hearing aids, then they might have to use assistive devices.
So Jerry, are you saying, so just like Joe described?
Yes.
Believe this system will, if they tap in the microphone, it'll go directly to their hearing aid?
Yeah, if you have, they have, if you, he's having speakers put in, he's having speakers put in. So you, with the new hearing aids that come out, everybody should be able to hear, but we're talking about other assistive devices.
In addition to.
In addition to, that with the ADA, a person has a choice, and we're, and we're giving them a choice.
The little one piece, I may not have set it up about, when I said about those speakers, those speakers should be mounted right out here, on the side of the cabinet. So that's going to amplify the, to everyone. So yes, somebody with a, an earpiece may just adjust to what everybody is hearing, and if they pair to it, that, and I don't know if, that's what I was trying to look at there, I can ask her again. If they compare to it because of the signal, they're, it's going to do exactly what you're saying his is, but he, but even if he doesn't pair a Bluetooth with his phone, if he doesn't have his phone with him, his hearing aids help him.
Out of the world.
Correct. So there's going to be enough sound coming out of here, the worst scenario is if he wants to turn his off or down, right there.
Yep.
And I'll verify with the expert, I'm going to pretend, so I'll make sure I find out exactly.
All right, back to my question, it's about a hearing aid over here, my question is, what about sound patient?
We give it back to get to.
That's what I thought, now, the next question I have is, do you know what frequencies all this stuff runs on?
Yes.
And there is, you do?
I think it says.
Can we find copies of that?
Yes, I asked her, she did.
I have that one there, and I have one.
You have it, you have it electronically, Chuck?
Uh, yes, I got it, in fact, I probably.
If you send it to me, I can print copies for everybody, or send it out, however you prefer, electronic or.
Yeah, of course.
I have it sent out.
Did you get that?
Yeah, the reason why I was asking is because I know the frequencies the railroad users, they use VHF, UHF, and eight-hundred bands, they use a lot of stuff, and I don't want to train on my.
Operating frequencies, seventy-two point one, that's seventy point, seventy-five point nine megahertz, there it is, right there.
So what is.
That's under eighty percent.
So I think that we have to table it until we all.
Yeah, we table it until.
We can talk about it against September fourth.
Yeah, September fourth, we should have everything done by that.
So my information we table until September fourth?
Certainly.
I have a motion and a second, any other?
Can I ask your question?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, you just got another complaint.
On this, on this here?
You just got another complaint.
Does this any, any chairs, or still these chairs?
Still these chairs now, yeah, I know. I thought about it, I should get something else. Right now, I'm trying to keep Dave from exposing himself.
He's not even here.
He's not even here.
Yeah, he does, he left.
Oh, that's right. He, he was probably, he's part, part of the summer time.
Okay. So moving to discussion, deliberation, and your official action on American Rescue Plan.
Yeah, we need a table.
Yes, we did a, we did a second.
Question.
You didn't vote.
Um, I thought we did, I'm sorry. All right, so all those favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
State of the vote.
Terry, whatever.
Now we are on the next page. Okay, and this is the end of deliberation and your official action on American Rescue Plan. Yeah, what the hell is that?
COVID ones?
COVID.
And what's the discussion about that?
My question is, where are we in, what are we doing? I missed the last meeting, and the last meeting, I understand, there was con, there was some discussion about it. I noticed that on tonight's chair's report, the American Rescue Plan is there.
The nerve.
Um, and the money is there, so I also know we're up to some deadlines.
Has to be obligated by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, and it has to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. When we, we have to do our reporting, we said we were taking the one-time, um, deduction for payroll and general government services, lost revenue, because it came down.
Okay, when was that?
While John Griner was still here.
It was this year.
Twenty-twenty-one, you had to.
I know.
That was this year.
Hey, let me ask you this while you're looking that up. How do we lose revenue? How do we lose revenue? Taxes are taxes. Nobody that tax rates that I know of, maybe our, our tax rate, okay, everybody's still paid the same taxes.
People are working wage taxes.
And we're justifying that online?
As part of the final rule, they allowed you to, you can take an election to declare for, you know, lost government, general fund revenue up to ten million dollars. So anybody that had ten million or less in ARPA funds could take that one-time election.
Yep.
And then there's certain things you can, you know, you can spend, you can spend it on a variety of things.
And I do want to point out, the law says, under that ten million threshold?
Yeah, I have.
It actually says regardless of actual loss of revenue.
Right, you don't have to do a loss calculation.
You're wrong, you're wrong.
Right here.
You're wrong.
From the ARPA local relief frequently asked questions, the National League of Cities, it says the Treasury has encouraged the NEUs to utilize the standard allowance for, it's this acronym, SLFRF, which is state and local.
You can use the fund, government service.
Recovery fund, and it specifically says, which allows municipality to claim up to ten million in revenue loss funding to each, regardless of actual loss of revenue.
And it's the fund government services, any government services, you can use it. There's a few, there are a few exceptions.
Yeah, but I, I hear what you're saying, but on page nine of the final rule, um, it says clearly, in order to use funds under government services, recipients should first determine revenue loss.
You don't have to.
They may then, they may then spend up to the amount of the general government services. It does determine revenue loss by ten million.
Mm-hmm.
That's not correct.
Yeah, and its recipient may elect a standard allowance of ten million dollars to spend on government services.
Up here, ten million.
I have, I mean, this is, this is the Bible.
I don't know what the date is.
What year, what, what date is that, Mr. Cherry?
January twenty-two.
Of this year?
Twenty-two.
No, there's a new one out. There's a, there's one, January twenty-twenty-four. There's a new final rule out, and the ten million dollars goes for people that got a lot of money because Westmoreland County got a hundred and two point five million, and they used the ten million for revenue loss to build the new garage that was crumbling in, to get into the courthouse. That's how they used their ten million for their revenue loss. You had to make so much money to go ten million, it's different from, from what he's saying.
Read the new rule. It's a simple thing, it's real simple. If we have to allocate what we're supposed to, we're going to be spending this money by the end of the year. I'm going to be a bear if I get surprised, that what's going to happen is we're going to take money and fund the little piece there, the little piece there, and do this over there, when in fact, there's a possibility we have other projects in this town that legally can fund, that we need to discuss. We've had one public meeting, it was it, and that was how long ago, and if you remember reading the minutes of that, that left us at, um, that somebody had to find out what the public may have lost, people who lost income. Then we had a discussion that night about how, how do we legally find that out? Do they have to bring us lost income information, how do we do that? And we left that meeting not sure how to get it to the people?
Hold up, hold up, hold up. If I remember correctly, that was if we were going to use it in a certain way.
Mm-mm.
Wasn't just the normal, how we were, that was a specific thing we were going to do.
That was the lost income of the residents.
Correct.
Yeah.
But there's multiple things that could be done, it was just never discussed any further.
Yeah, exactly.
But we decided that we were going to take it for lost government, that standard allowance, and there's certain things.
Not that meeting.
No, 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 a lot of that. We had to report on it. We had to report on it, and that's what, like I said, John.
And we did that in public meetings.
No, John Griner was here. We had to report it, and John Samuel Jethon and I, boy, he didn't say, he called us, and told us, this is where you need to put it right now, because at some point, you're going to spend it on something, but as for right now, that's what you need to say. So that's what.
But as of today, we have no true number of what our government losses are, and how much of that we're going to take.
We're not required to calculate that.
I'm sorry?
We're not required to calculate.
No, 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 no.
He's a liar.
You're saying that.
He's lying.
We're going to refund lost tax revenue.
No, I said we took the standard allowance that they.
Okay, we took the standard allowance.
Said we're going to use it for lost government revenue, and you're not required to calculate your actual amount of loss, and you can use it for, there's different things.
Okay, I just get that, maybe here's my point, we had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, it is now three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. At three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, what you're saying, we can do with this money, with Griner's in and all of that, do we have less than three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in there?
In where? You have much on the treasure.
The allocation of these funds, see, maybe I'm on here right.
And they haven't been allocated yet.
Okay, but you, the, the idea here is we're going to take some of that money and reimburse ourselves for lost revenue.
No, no.
Okay, then why are we even discussing that? I don't know, just we, we use it for whatever project we want.
One of the things.
We can do that for the banner, community restroom down there on the park.
I knew it.
We can, we can use it to, whatever.
I get that, but that's my point, maybe I'm not explaining myself, I'm hearing that, you, your words were that it's for our lost revenue.
No, that's not what I said, I said we took, when we reported it, we reported that we were taking the standard deduction that we were allowed to do, claiming, it was for, uh, general government lost revenue, like, like it says in here. We could spend that on a variety of things, government services, construction of cell phones, road building, maintenance services, administration.
By following that way.
No.
It's just a, we have to sign something by a certain.
Correct, it was a special.
And we could still spend the three fifty any way we want.
Well, there are fuels that are out.
Within that guideline.
Correct.
Within this guideline, okay. That's why I was, because missing the last meeting, from the pieces I got of all of it, it sounded like that this ARPA money was being absorbed into the general fund, the line item was going to be gone, that's why the first thing I said was that, which is that line item.
Who told you that, where did it even come from?
Baseball? I don't.
Joe, it came from Joe.
No.
Joe.
It gets sent to me, I don't.
Yes, it did.
I don't even know.
Ed was the one that asked it, Ed didn't understand it the way it was explained either, because I had to talk to Ed after the meeting, I don't know why.
Actually, I wasn't here, and Ed told me, and I had to explain. I mean, it's been that separate line, it's been in that separate line item since we've gone.
Well, now, but now the last question for this is that we have to, we have to allocate the money, we don't have to spend it until. Well, we have to report out by the end of this year, that says what we're going with it?
You have to decide by the end of this year, in the spring of next year, I'll have a report and say what you have to decide.
So the other thing, broadband is one of the broadband infrastructure, and getting Bluetooth and wireless infrastructure in here for handicap accessibility of ADA stuff, you can use.
You can bomb both the libraries.
No, actually, for ADA, this is done, you know, the ADA, that I'm aware of, Republican, the need is Republican, may have to make that main door out there, uh, and, I mean.
But what I'm saying is, maybe you can use these, some of these funds for your sound system because it's broadband infrastructure, that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with that, I would be happy to reverse it, because what I don't want to do is I don't want to be back here in twenty-twenty-five talking about a sound system and having the other parties out there that we know about.
Yeah.
Breathing down our back all the time, when in fact, we have a system here, this man can build this table in two months, talk to him again today to reconfirm it, in two months, you can have this built, we can have in a week all this sound system equipment, so it's ready to go. And, um, so I don't really want to delay by saying we'll wait until ARPA can pay for it. We got this one, we got.
Okay. So, after all that, what is the mission?
Do you want this to be on the agenda for the workshop, the talk?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's what I heard.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we move this to the second, I'm very. I make a motion, we move this to the second, verse four, workshop meeting.
Okay, I have a second. Do I have a second?
Second.
Chuck. Okay. Any question, additional questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Be her first.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
We may not have now, we won't have an hour.
Okay. Everyone should have received a copy of bills, where are the wishes canceled?
Make a motion, we pay bills.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Cherry, any questions or comments on the motion? Then, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? May I, Cherry? Next is citizen comments. Jerry Lewis? Jerry Lewis?
Yes, am I recognized?
You're being recognized.
Thank you. How long is it going to take you to figure out a PA system? When Chuck and I has already done it? And all it has to do is go in and say, okay, this is what we agreed to. How long are you going to drag it out? Number two is get your facts straight about the American Rescue Plan. And the bathroom, down there. You're going to put a bathroom and put that Denali precasted one, right? That's the same one that Joe picked out in two thousand and seven that they wanted a grant for, a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and now you're saying it's a hundred and fifty thousand. How'd that go down in price?
I'm magic.
You're in, you have a good face to talk to people, I can negotiate with you.
Yeah, okay, good, negotiate it. Because putting a bathroom there, when you put the sports board in the pavilion clear on the other side, you think it's funny, Tony? You think it's funny?
I'm not allowed to do this, but go ahead.
You better not be. No, you don't tell me what to do. You don't tell me what to do. I don't know where you got that at. But I'm saying, no, the solicitor done either. You people have escalated and escalated and escalated more problems. And I'm not going to put up with it, and I keep telling you this. And Bonnie mentioned it either, this earlier. You know, we are entitled to a voice. We're entitled to a voice. Not many people come here and talk, but they should be heard and listened to.
You wanted an ADA accessible bathroom, right?
Yeah.
So we're trying to get you one, and then all you're doing is complaining about it.
No, I'm not complaining.
He said tonight that it was way too expensive for him to even talk about it.
He hasn't even, he said that he has, that he had different contractors. Now it's getting to the point, you know, you put, put it in, put it in. Do what you want to do, put it in. But the park isn't ADA compliant.
You're us all talking about it.
It's not ADA compliant. The park isn't. You people keep thinking that you know ADA when you don't. And you don't want to listen to people who do. It's in your best interest to do it. That way you have less problems. When you start listening to people and taking what they say. The bathroom there, okay. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem.
This is Bonnie Dawson for the Mayor's Resignation and Community Day.
So I would like to thank the whole county council that showed up for Community Day. I know whether it was definitely questionable, but I appreciate seeing a couple of you that did it. I know you all love Facebook.
I can't hear. Bonnie, please speak up, we can hear you.
I know you all love Facebook so much. But that is a, the way the town is communicating with each other and with you guys. Today or yesterday, some eighty-eight-year-old grandmother is being bullied because the mayor employees have made it a very hostile situation to sell her house. Yeah, I don't know, I don't even know. We sold our home twelve years ago, and the mayor made an living nightmare. Those are just the two that were said between yesterday and today. Definitely heard a lot of it from other people. I'm wondering why the mayor's resignation was not discussed tonight? And then if Chelsea or someone could, after I'm done, talk about the next steps and who's responsible for what, and for how long, and, you know, and what the plan is. Cherry, you had filled up a sheet about texting nine-one-one?
I did, I also left one on the table there.
Yeah, there, it's not there?
Oh, well, that's a big topic.
So you put one on the table?
Yeah, I didn't know how many to put out, but we've always met more.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because I'd like to try to get that out.
Sit right on your damn shelf on your principal.
I don't know what happened with Ed. I just know that a lot of people in the community are upset about it, and a common denominator is council and borough staff. Should I wait?
Can I, can I answer? Can I have a answer? Um, resignation part. He didn't give me his resignation until like seven-thirty last night. So the putting on an agenda would have been illegal.
So under the sunshine law, we have to have it on the agenda twenty-four hours in advance.
He put it on Facebook way before I got it.
Oh, my God.
So, and that technically is not the proper way to go about it. But it is what it is.
I would have assumed that he would have emailed it out.
He did not. And then when I got it, I sent Joe an email last night to send it to all council this morning. Okay, so we quickly put it on, it'll be on next month's agenda, his resignation. I didn't get it.
Yeah, he's not resigned.
So you know, from, under the borough code, we, well, first, under the sunshine law, we have an obligation, unless it's a de minimis matter, we can't add anything to the agenda twenty-four hours in advance. So either this matter can be addressed at the next regular council meeting to accept the resignation, and then council will have thirty days to appoint. If they do not appoint somebody, then it goes to the vacancy board, there's fifteen days to appoint there. If that does not happen, it goes to the court of common pleas for a judge to appoint. So at that, you know, those are the processes.
So he's still the mayor.
When a mayor is absent or incapacitated, the president of council sits as the mayor and does, if you notice, Mr. Vaca was not voting tonight on matters because he's sitting as the mayor. He will vote on ordinance, vetoes, or tie votes until the mayor's seat is put in place again. So the vice president will sit as president and run the meetings until a mayor is either appointed by this council, the vacancy board, or by the courts.
Chelsea, is it okay to ask Chip to put in the paper, put it on our website, that we are looking?
Yeah, so again. Yeah, at this point, we're looking for people of interest. Again, the resignation has not officially been accepted because it couldn't get on tonight's agenda in a tiny manner, so.
So he's still the mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, he's still the mayor.
Well, but he's unavailable under the borough code because he's effective immediately. He does not want to continue with his services. So that's why Tony sits as council.
Okay, we're going to ask him.
It's when there's an absence or unavailability. So, or vacancy. So that, that's why we move that way, under the borough code. Correct, and then if Dawn is unavailable, I believe the next person's Dave.
Yes.
His present.
Yes, his present, correct.
Okay.
I make a motion, we have to make a motion to appoint the public dog for mayor. Did you do that easier with it?
No.
No, Heather put in for it again.
So you were accepting it?
I assume to attend to me, I share the merits. Okay, all but any questions or discussions? All those in favor, aye?
Just because he wasn't here doesn't mean he's not available.
But he made himself available.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, because he's not the mayor anymore.
But this is going for election.
Is that what he said?
It will, if somebody has to.
Is that what he said?
Well, then, sorry.
I did look at, I swear.
Mayor Dawson.
Yeah, I, yes.
Mayor Dawson.
Bonnie, I think it might be thirty days. I think it's fifty.
There's thirty days. Tony's wife's going to put in that, and then on it.
I'm out today, you know, and that's what he did. He gave, he gave the town, the council a big middle finger, this person.
Now, what did you tell me last month? What did you tell me last month?
I'm talking about all the things I bought.
You said that we're going to have on the agenda putting up the veterans banners, but how did that?
I, I, I've had a lot of shit on my plate.
What do you think, I gotta be there every two days? I gotta go.